All right, so good morning, everyone, and welcome to day two of the Course Education Summit. I hope you enjoyed yesterday's sessions and that you are looking forward to continuing the conversation today. I am Jessie Jarvis, a certified yoga instructor based here in Boise, Idaho. Very excited to be here with you today to guide you through some approachable breathwork practices. I bring yoga mindfulness and breathwork practices to companies like yours all over the world, and I'm excited to be here with you today. We will move through this approachable practice to help us calm our nervous systems and connect with our bodies. If you have any questions during the session, please send a message in the chat box, and I'll do my best to answer any of your questions. Now let's sit back and enjoy the most meaningful break that you'll take all day. So with breathwork here, awesome, it's so awesome to see so many of you guys joining from all over the world, all over the country in the US. I'm going to be moving to Florida here soon, so I saw hello from sunny Florida, looking forward to that. So as we enter into this practice of breathwork today, I encourage you to turn off some notifications on your phones, silent your phones, silent those messages that pop up on the computer if you're on there, just so that you can really hone in on this 30-minute break and enjoy this really meaningful time to connect in with yourself and your body and your breath. So let's sit nice and tall. You can have your feet on the ground, roll the shoulders up and back a few times. So we'll start there, just a little bit of movement to kind of get to feel into the body a little bit. This part of our body, our upper chest and our throat is kind of the immediate spot of where oxygen enters into our body. And so it's important to kind of loosen this area up, which tends to be a little bit of a tighter spot for most of us. And so as you're sitting tall, again, you can roll your shoulders around a little bit. You can drop an ear to shoulder, stretching out through the neck, even open the jaw, wiggle the jaw around, find some spaciousness there. And then once you're feeling good and settled and ready to start, we'll just find our feet on the ground and again, sitting nice and tall. So as we move through these practices, if we're seated, typically we tend to slouch, we round our spine, and we actually compress the abdomen area, which is where our lungs are living, right? Our lungs are up here, there are ribs, and then also our belly. And when we slouch, we kind of restrict the amount of oxygen that we can take into our body. So sitting nice and tall, you start to feel your heart center really broaden. Sitting in this confident seated posture also helps us energetically to feel more confident. And as we move through these practices, I'll encourage you to close your eyes, but at any point know that you can open your eyes or keep your eyes open the whole time. As we move through the practices, if anything feels uncomfortable, also know that you can just keep breathing at your own pace and inhale when you want to, exhale when you want to, outside of my direction. So do what feels right for your body. I'm just a guide guiding you through these practices in an approachable way. But again, you know your body, listen to your body, and do whatever feels right and needed for you in the moment. So let's find maybe some closed eyes or a soft gaze beyond your screen. So looking off of the screen so that you can kind of release the blue light influence that the screens have on us. I'm going to close my eyes. And with your eyes open or closed, just find really heavy eyelids. Just start to soften those tiny micro muscles around your eyes. And then start to feel that sense of release washing down through the face. So you feel your cheeks relax and your jaw relax, and even the tongue inside of your mouth starts to let go, releasing from the teeth. And without changing anything, without changing the quality of your breath, just notice, bring your awareness to the fact that you're breathing in your body right now. You breathe all day long, every single day, from the moment you enter this world into the moment we leave this world. Your breath is your life force, it's with you all the time, and we never have to think about it. So it's a true gift from the universe. But what is really powerful is thinking about the fact that we're breathing. And it helps us to immediately calm our nervous system when we do think about that we're breathing. So as you're sitting here with that tall spine, broad in the chest, and just notice the flow of your natural breath. We have two types of breath. We have our natural breath, which is this one that we're just watching. We're just watching our body do its thing as it breathes. And then we have what we call the be-breath, where we let the breath be, and then the do-breath, where we intentionally do the breathing of the body, and that's what we're going to do a lot of today. And so start to do the breath, start to breathe in a little bit more, and then breathe out a little bit more. So with your next inhale, fill up as much as you think you can, but then sip up a little bit more air. And then exhale, enjoy that release, and then exhale a little bit more air out of the body. And then do that again, inhale fully, fill up to your capacity, and then sip up a little air. And then maybe an open-mouthed exhale, enjoy that release of the breath, and then squeeze some extra air out of the body. And then do that again, inhale through the nose, fill the belly, all the way up towards the throat and the head. And then exhale, feel the shoulders start to soften down, and then contract your abdomen to help squeeze that air out of the body. And then do this three more times on your own. Just breathe in fully, sip up a little more air at the top, and then breathe out, and empty out a little bit more, two more times. And as you're breathing and you're noticing this flow of the breath, notice the movement of your body, the rising of your shoulders as you breathe in, and then the falling of the shoulders as you breathe out. One more time. And then, once you're done with that last exhale, just let your breath come back to its natural rhythm. And then soften the muscles of the face again, and your jawline. Good. And we'll move into what I call an equal-part breath, what we call an equal-part breath. So I'm going to start to count the inhales and the exhales. So we'll breathe in for the count of four seconds, and then we'll breathe out for the count of four seconds. And we'll do this about six to eight times, and I'll do the counting for you. So first, we'll begin by taking a clearing round of breath. So breathe in fully, sip it up at the top, and then an open-mouthed exhale, clear it out. Squeeze out all the air that you can, and then breathe in for the count of four, three, two, one. Exhale for four, three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Keep it going. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Great. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Keep it going. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Our last round in for four, three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Inhale fully to your capacity, and an open-mouthed exhale. Enjoy that release, and then allow your breath to come back to its natural rhythm. Just breathe in and breathe out, breathe in and breathe out. And just notice here, maybe your eyes are closed, or you have a soft gaze beyond the screen. Just notice kind of the residual effects of that intentional breath, the do-breath, where we're doing the breathing in the body. If you could sum up your experience with one word, what would that word be right now? Maybe it's calm, maybe it's settled, peaceful, tranquil, right? Maybe it's something totally different, maybe it's energized or anxious. When we focus on breath, sometimes it can invoke some anxious feelings. And so that's where you come into play of just breathing as it feels right for your body. We're going to move into a breath practice that's really great to do at nighttime, especially if we wake up in the middle of the night. So again, it's a calming our nervous system breath, even when we just think about breathing, we're calming our nervous system. But when we start to add in a pause, a retention of breath, it actually helps to physiologically support this really deep calm and ease of the mind calming down, of the heart rate calming down, and combined at night, naturally it's dark, and we're helping our body to really soothe and find some ease to sleep a little bit better. So this breath practice is called four, seven, eight. We breathe in for the count of four, then we hold our breath for the count of seven, and then we breathe out for the count of eight. And so when we retain our breath, sometimes we're not used to holding our breath, and so it can actually make us feel a little bit like, you know, nervous, because it's not normal for us to really hold our breath too often, unless we do these practices. And so at any point, if you need to breathe in, breathe in, right? Just know that you are in control here. And so let's begin. And one other thing, one question I tend to get is, how can I breathe out more than I'm breathing in? Right? And so it's amazing, our body as we breathe, we actually don't exhale as much air or oxygen as we can, right? Our lungs are not totally smooth lungs, muscles in our bodies, they have little grooves and pockets. And so as we breathe throughout the day, we typically are mostly chest breathers. So we're taking short and shallow breaths from our chest mainly, versus down to our lower ribs where our diaphragm is. And so we're actually not expelling all of the oxygen out of our body. And so that's where this breath practice is really powerful, because you're helping to rid of stale air that gets stuck inside our body, and then take in, in that four count, that really deep breath, take in this fresh oxygen that's filling into these crevices that you've just cleared out. All right, so it's very nourishing and actually supportive to help build the muscle tissue of our lungs as well, because we forget that our lungs are muscles and they need to be exercised to stay healthy. So again, sitting nice and tall, and again, eyes could stay closed, or a soft gaze up beyond the screen. And we'll take a clearing round of breath before we begin, so nice, deep inhale, fill all the way up. And an open-mouthed exhale, squeeze all the air out of the body as much as you can, and then a deep breath in for four, three, two, one. Hold for six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, big breath, one, hold, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Inhale for three, two, one. Hold, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale eight, nice and slow, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. One more round, inhale for three, two, one. Hold, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. And natural breath in, fill up as you want to, and a natural exhale, let it go whenever you want. And then allow your natural breath, your be-breath, to take over, just let the breath be. No controlling, no doing of the breath, and just sit in this. Just relish in this residual effect of your practice. And notice, once again, how are you feeling? And mindfulness practice, right, we pause in presence and we ask ourselves, how am I feeling now? Having this playful sense of curiosity, releasing any sense of judgment of what's going on or what our mind comes up with, we just notice in this playful sense of curiosity, like, oh, isn't that interesting? Oh, isn't that interesting, as things shift and move? Beautiful. All right, so let's keep going, we've got 15 minutes left. And this next practice is called in Sanskrit, which is the ancient yogic language, right? So I've studied lots of yoga, yoga practices, and pranayama, which is a breath practice. Deerga breath is what this next one is called, and it's three-part breathing. So as I mentioned before, typically as we move about in our days, most of us are chest breathers. Babies are belly breathers, babies innately breathe from their belly. And then as we age and we have experiences that shape ourselves, our mind, our personalities and all that, we tend to become short and shallow breathers, and that's where we call we're chest breathers. We're just breathing kind of mainly up here. So deerga breath, three-part breath, is helping to encourage us to breathe down into the belly, in towards our ribs, and then all the way up to our chest. So as we breathe in, we actually bypass the chest and the ribs, and we push the belly out almost unnaturally. Like you're just, you're really full, and you're like, look at how full I am, and you push your belly out, right? So just practice that, you can even bring your hands on your belly, and as you inhale, push your belly out, and then squeeze your belly in. And that's it, just focus on your belly, push your belly out, and then squeeze your belly in. One more, inhale, push the belly out, almost unnaturally, right, and then exhale, squeeze it in. Okay, now bring your hands in like a little backwards and forward C shapes to cup your rib cage. So cup those side ribs here, and then breathe into the sides of your ribs. So as you inhale, feel your ribs open up, and squeeze in as you exhale. Inhale, open the ribs, exhale, squeeze them in. Inhale, open, exhale, squeeze. Good. And then we'll bring our hands to our chest so that we can feel the chest breathing. So as you inhale, feel the breath, it's a short, shallow breath, you're not breathing down into the belly or the ribs, you're just breathing up here and out. Right? It's a little bit harder to really focus on that, but we do it innately. And out. Guys, you're going to feel it lift and fall. Let's do one more. And out. Okay, so now let's add all these three parts together. So we bring one hand on the belly, the other hand on the chest, kind of middle chest. I like to cross my thumb and pinky here, so things are connected. And then we'll breathe everything out of the body. And as you breathe in through your nose, push your belly out, fill your ribs, and lift your chest. Exhale, feel your chest release, your ribs glide in, and your belly contracts, pulling in. Inhale, press the belly out, fill the ribs, open the chest. Exhale, feel the chest release, the ribs pull in, and the belly tightens. Keep going, inhale, belly, ribs, chest. Exhale, chest, ribs, belly. Again, inhale, belly, ribs, chest. Exhale, chest, ribs, belly. Let's do three more, inhale, belly, ribs, chest. So it's a deep breath, and exhale, chest, ribs, belly, getting empty. Two more, inhale, belly, ribs, and up to the chest. Exhale, chest, ribs, and down to the belly. One more time, big breath, belly, ribs, chest. Exhale, chest, ribs, belly. Release your hands, take a deep nourishing breath in, open the mouth and exhale it out. Let your shoulders and arms be heavy, let your breath just come and go naturally. Relax the tongue away from your teeth, and release that bottom jaw. When we focus on breathing, on work, on whatever task at hand, we tend to clench, we tighten in, right? We, it's natural, we just have some tension that builds in. So here and now, after these breathing practices, intentionally relax more. Let your shoulders and arms feel heavy. Let your ribs feel heavy in the torso. And as you feel heavy here in your body, still feel the natural lifting sensation through your back body, so your spine is still tall. And you're encouraging your body to still maintain breathing down into the belly and up to ribs and chest. Even with our breath being natural, we can gently guide where the breath is filling in the body. Beautiful. All right, so let's do another practice. So this one, we are not retaining, we're maybe retaining for just a moment. And this is called an alternate nostril breath, and it is as it sounds. We breathe in alternating nostrils. So we'll actually use our ring finger and our thumb to block the left and the right nostril. What I tend to do when I do this practice is I'm focusing so much that I'm actually like really forcefully pushing my finger or thumb onto my nostril, and it doesn't have to be a forceful push, it just has to be like a very light tap, kind of up here too, right above like the nostril. There's this blocking that airway, just ever so slightly. So just be mindful of that, be soft and gentle with it. Okay, and just get used to like, okay, I'm blocking, blocking, blocking. We're going to breathe in through the left nostril, out through the right nostril, in through the right nostril, and out through the left nostril, and then we'll keep it going, that rhythm, okay? And as we breathe in and out, we actually block the opposite nostril. So we block the right to breathe in through the left, block the left to breathe out through the right. Breathe in through the right, cover it, breathe out through the left. Now continue with me, breathe in through the left, cover, breathe out through the right. Into the right, cover, out through the left. In through the left, cover, out through the right. Maybe your eyes close, inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Keep it going, inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Nice and slow and steady, inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Just a few more rounds, inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Inhale right, cover, exhale left. Inhale left, cover, exhale right. Release your hand, inhale through both nostrils, open the mouth, exhale it out. Take another deep breath in, open the mouth and exhale. And then again, pause here, notice the effects of the practice. If you could sum up your experience now in one word, what would that word be? How are you feeling? Let the corners of your mouth lift to your ears, give yourself a smile, how does that make you feel? Great. And if your eyes are closed, you can blink them open. Okay, I read that it's hard to do this with a deviated septum. Yes, it is, and I should have mentioned that beforehand. So with the deviated septum, right, there's a blockage on our airway, so we favor one side of the nostril. So you can attempt it, maybe there's a little bit of space there, maybe not. And so just breathing in and out of that one nostril, kind of highlighting that, totally fine. Breathing out, it feels good for you to breathe, also important to do. Yay, so relax, good relief, love those words. Great, and I've learned many new ways to enhance my quiet time with these exercises, absolutely. Right? So breathing and thinking about these different techniques, there's literally hundreds, if not thousands, of different ways for us to manipulate our breath. And all of them are very nourishing to our nervous system, right? And our nervous system is kind of what keeps us active, what keeps us going, or calms us down. We have our sympathetic nervous system and our parasympathetic nervous system. So with these deep breathing exercises or just intentional breathwork practices, we are connecting with our parasympathetic nervous system. Most of the time, majority of us, yes, it helps with anxiety and panic attacks, absolutely, absolutely. So most of the time, in majority of the day, most of us are spending a lot of time, if not most of the day, in our sympathetic, this kind of fight and flight state of being, which is actually draining, it's very draining for our bodies. And it's important for us to fluctuate between the two, between our activated state and our deactivated state, our sympathetic nervous system and parasympathetic nervous system. So to have this balance throughout the day of feeling charged up, and then, oh, I can intentionally relax and calm and soothe, that's extremely nourishing for our overall well-being, for the health of our muscle tissues, for the health of our heart, for the health of our mind, and the quality of our thoughts, and for the benefit of our sleep as well. Good for teachers before class, absolutely, right? What do I do before I teach these classes to hundreds of people? I breathe, right? It's so important. And another practice that maybe we'll do like two rounds of, because it's two minutes until we're done, is a boxing breath. And boxing breath is really what Navy SEALs use to help calm their nervous systems as they're going into deep waters, as they're breathing deep in water as well, and helping to calm under super stressful situations. So, excuse me, oh, I thought I was going to sneeze, but I'm not, okay. So a boxing breath is as it sounds, we kind of box ourselves in. We breathe in for four counts, we breathe out for four counts, or we breathe in for four counts, we hold our breath for four counts, we breathe out for four counts, and we hold our breath out for four counts. Let's just do one round of this, you get a general idea of it, and then practice it on your own, I encourage you. So let's exhale everything out, breathe in for four, three, two, one. Hold the breath for three, two, one. Exhale for three, two, one. Hold the breath out for three, two, one. Natural breath in, fill all the way up, open the mouth, exhale it out. There we go. Thank you everybody so much for joining today. This session will be followed by a 30-minute break in programming, so from 8:30 to 9:30 Pacific time, and please make note of the time zone. At 9:00 AM Pacific, we will be back, so simply go back to the event page and navigate to the agenda tab to join us for the rest of the live programming today. At nine AM Pacific, we will be back. So simply go back to the event page and navigate to the agenda tab to join us for the rest of the live programming today. Thank you all so very much. It was a true gift to be able to guide you. If you have questions, please feel free to message it in the chat box and I'll do my best to answer, even if I'm sending you a message after the, after the fact. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all these thank yous. I'm so glad you thought it was great and that you learned a little bit. And that you're able, yeah, to support yourself and maybe children in your life with regulating our nervous systems, right? Helping to calm and soothe our bodies, our minds and our hearts. Thank you all so much. Wishing you a wonderful rest of your day and all the best with the programming up ahead. Have a beautiful rest of your day. Be well.